I'm meeting the board. It is four twenty-four. And the roll call remains the same. Everyone is still in attendance. Except for Tony's disappeared son. He'll be back. And if anybody has one of these, I didn't say earlier with you, please turn it to silent. And I'll ask the board, will you say the pledge again or not?
I never got it.
All right. Anybody signed the speakers?
No, I had no speaker cards. What we do, Flavia Walsh, Magnolia Lakes.
Flavia Walsh, Magnolia Lakes. I just have two items on follow-up. One is the holiday event. I know Doug brought it up at the last meeting about better communication. And I just thought of a simple thing that maybe front desk people could do, which would be email the cams for the HOAs and then they can email blast to the residents. Since I know the CDD cannot email to the residents directly, but they could do that to the cam.
We put a banner out, Chris, do you know?
No, we didn't. We didn't put a banner out because so we get a lot of out-of-the-gate way traffic from hosting up there. We didn't put them out last year either, we had a full house. And what we do to promote the event is we put the flyer in the utility bills that went out and we also send it to the HOAs and EPAC and Castle Group. So that has gone out, Joe.
Okay.
I mean, I do think, I think a banner would be a great idea.
I think with all the drive-through traffic that we get from all the other parts of the county, that I think we're advertising, we're not advertising the people in Gateway, we're advertising the people in the high acres.
So, so we're willing to not let our people know in fear of people outside of the community coming?
I think that we've, I think through the cams, it's been communicated to all of the local communities.
Better people know. Okay.
And then the second one, I just wanted to do a follow-up on the conservation easement and to see if the board or staff has made any decisions in regards to the application, because I don't think it was included on the approved work that was approved at the last meeting. That's it.
And we're working on a license agreement with the county for permission to do that before we sign any permanent application for them to move forward. And I think Miss Spinks will find out tomorrow night how big the crowd is, whether we'll need the banners or not, because we didn't use them last year.
Yeah, it did.
And we had pretty much a full house. And we made an extra effort to email blast, you know, the HOAs and the cams. But we can put a banner out next year if you like, we have them.
Let's see how it goes this year before we decide on next year.
And that's all we have for public comment.
All right, then, that moves us to District Attorney.
During, I just received an email from John Perdimo with the county yesterday about the various agreements. And I think we're going to talk about that later on. And John had a conversation with Randy Serpche, and I can relay that when we get to that item. Working on other items that are still in the hot area. We'll have the draft request for Turn Jones opinion at January board meeting, the board review. And then also, you know, working with the district manager on the SRF agreement. And that's being signed today and sent off for the design loan. Working on the DBL for the FPL so we can get that in our hands. One other item too, Steve Bloom's not here tonight, but he provided me with the materials that your request from the audit, auditor had some comments on the assessments. And had some questions about certain properties or their parcels and number of units. I reviewed the materials that Steve provided and I just don't think Mr. Gaines fully understood. I'll wait till Steve is here at the next board meeting, I'm comfortable with the action that was taken. And that's true with regards to, you know, correcting those various issues on assessments and parcels and EAU allocations or EARUs. So I'll just check for Stephen, if that's okay with the board.
Yes.
But I appreciate Stephen sending all the backup material on that.
That's all for now, Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
District in, District Management Report.
See Kenny came up, the G.I.S. We'll, we'll move to our G.I.S. presentation. Kenny has a line break in an air conditioning unit down at our VFT Drive building, so our succession plan isn't working at the moment. So they have all hands on deck. And I had an update on G.I.S. development and we'll let Austin talk about that. And also Glenn, and Glenn's going to talk a little bit about our G.I.S. efforts out on the soccer field and he could give you an update on what's going on with the dog park and the pool.
So I just need to start the slideshow for it. So Austin Manoli, intern. So just an update on the G.I.S. work we've completed so far. We've completed three more subdivisions for a total cost of eighty-two thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Eighty-two?
I think it was eighty-two.
Eighty-two thousand?
Oh, eighty-two hundred.
Thank you.
I thought there was a decimal there or something. I do that a lot. Eighty-two hundred, not eighty-two thousand. So, in addition, we've also mapped the section of Gateway Boulevard from Daniel's Parkway up to Commerce Lakes Drive. That section was mainly done to, so our G.I.S. consultant could basically test how he would be able to map busier sections of Gateway, because there's a lot of real intricate utilities, lines and a lot of features on these main roadways like Gateway and Griffin Drive. Also, through process improvements, he was able to bring our billing rate down to sixty-two cents per linear foot. And we're hoping he'll be able to keep it at that rate or continue coming down throughout the rest of the project.
Can you go back to that?
Oh, yes.
What do the, what do the axes mean?
The?
On the road, the little squares with axes?
Oh, those are drainage structures, I think those are mostly mitered in sections. Yeah, we're also planning on trying to develop a G.I.S. map for the entire length of Griffin Drive from Gateway Boulevard to State Ride eighty-two. Mostly to aid as part of an irrigation system redesign, but we're still waiting to submit the proposal for that.
So in that effort, were you, you marked the irrigation lines where the heads are? Is that what it's called?
It would be everything, it would be field verifying the data from all the maps. We'd take the data from the maps, put it in the system, stormwater drainage, water sewer irrigation, anything like that. And one, to turn, get rid of that paper resource. And two, when you go to design a new irrigation system, you know where everything is. So it's just the first step in design work.
And this is just showing what our consultant projects that he'll have to do in order to completely map Gateway. So you've got the north area, east area, or south area and west area. The blue lines show areas that he's completed already. And he projects that there is one hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred linear feet of features to map. And at sixty-two cents per linear foot, this will cost a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. But we're hoping that he'll be able to continue improving his process and he'll continue bringing that price down a little.
What drives that, that price reduction?
His efficiencies in rubber sheeting. And his staff were familiar with the data and taking it from the scanned images we send them. This has a two-fold process, one to get rid of the paper resource so everything's scanned. And another offset on this is you can go Google Earth down, all those map sets are being loaded into KMZ so the people in the field can go out and touch the subdivision and the map set for those utilities come up.
How, how much is the problems we have exposed in our as-built caused going on?
We're doing field locates right now, that's one of the tools, is to be able to go in and edit once we start excavating things and looking at them and compare what they are.
I actually did field verify the section of Gateway that he had done. And from what I can tell, it's pretty accurate. Our as-builts that he digitized were pretty accurate. I can't really tell because I don't have.
Where were you?
This was for Gateway Boulevard, the section that he digitized.
Be patient.
They'll find problems, don't worry.
Don't worry.
They'll find some problems, don't worry.
They'll find problems, they'll do that.
And then as far as where we can go from here, well, he's already started developing a preliminary version of a web app that you can access from a computer. Click on that link, you can actually pull up what he's completed so far. And you can also potentially develop customer service applications off of it. You can use your map to post notifications about service disruptions or traffic alterations that may need to take place or something like boil water notices also. And that's everything I had. Any questions?
From a standpoint, I know it says, in the utility feature, it says it's internal use only. And I guess from the standpoint of because the legislature recognized that for nine eleven and all utility facilities also, all those plans are confidentially examined. And so part of that process will try to prevent intrusion by others and hack the G.I.S. information.
Yeah, I think so. It's on our network, so I'm not really, I can't really speak about that sort of network security stuff, but it's not, it's not really on the internet per se. It's a thing that's stored on our server.
We've already seen a problem with that with the Commerce Lakes with that large sewer that goes down the north side of the FBI building. Those plans just evaporated. And I'm sure it has something to do with the FBI. Because we can't find any of the plans from that pipe up there.
We have, we have some areas in Gateway where the hard copy maps are non-existent and the firms that did the work are non-existent.
Yeah, we do have a couple of those. We just crossed that bridge when we get to.
That's everything I had.
Want to take a, talk a little about soccer map?
Bledge Order Park and Recreation and Landscape Department here at Gateway Services. I just want to speak a little bit about our soccer complex and what we've been trying to get going out there. We had Russ Geiger with Hydrologic out to do some mapping of our irrigation soccer fields. That includes the valves, the main line, the lateral lines, the sprinkler heads, the drainage boxes, et cetera. Even the controller. You can see in the left-hand picture, there's a little pink circle around a red box. That was a missing valve on the soccer field at Mainscapes, wasn't even aware that they had. So it was found by Russ Geiger out there mapping. And picture on the right are, is, there's roughly, it doesn't show the lower-hand picture, but there's six areas on the next, on that, on the next slide that shows where we thought the main line was over in fields four and five, but that's not the case, it's not there. So we plan on acquiring a GPR sled, a ground penetrating radar sled, which will really help us out because we can go out there and locate every single lateral line, the main lines, drainage lines, et cetera. That will really help us out on the field. Saying that, after Russ puts everything into the system, he'll be able to put it down into a PDF format, which will be able to send to all of our field staff for better reference and ease of repairs, Mainscapes for ease of repairs. And they'll understand what they're dealing with more instead of just having some kind of idea that they thought was out there. And that's about it for what I have on, on the soccer field.
And I'll add, we're also having PDF maps that he's made and given to the league so they can use them to register their games and what teams are going to be on what field. Right now, they just kind of put something up on paper. And this is something they can put on their computers and print out and post that will help them to, to look professional look.
It will also help them relay out the soccer, do soccer field relay outs. Change the direction of play.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just touch briefly on a couple of things. I'll, I'll wait till candidate, because a lot of these things he has to talk about are very important. He has some photos of some of the utility work we've been doing lately. And he wants to also give you an update because we continue to struggle with those MIUs on the meter system to the point where right now we have two hundred and fifty of them that need to be replaced, which causes us to take our entire utility staff and occupy them for two or three days. So we continue to struggle on the labor side while they're replacing the parts at no cost. Labor is a lot more than that. And it also dominoes across our entire staff because now you have customer service issues with meters that didn't have a read, you know, so we have to estimate the bill. And you know, go out there and make sure they're working, so it's turned into a real chore. And we're continuing along with the replacement of a high-service irrigation pump and plan to have that in the ground and operational by March, which will bring our system back up to ten thousand gallons a day capacity from the current eight thousand gallons. And also be bringing some information in the next board meeting about what it would take for us to cover the cost of the utility relocation for the roundabouts and what type of surcharge we would need to put on the bills. And at the same time, start some discussion about the facilities plan that's coming in January. And if the board does want to borrow money from the SRF for those utility improvements, where we'll have to go with our rate to cover that dead service. And I don't want to sound overest, I think we're the lowest of the twelve utilities in Southwest Florida. And I think we'd still be in the top, in the bottom two even after these surcharges. But we'll be bringing you some hard numbers. And Russ, Russ Wire will also be here in January. We want to set up a workshop, schedule it on the second, and get that process rolling.
Yeah, on Russ, on the assessment methodology, as quick as possible, can we get the information from Russ so we can start reading it?
I'll ask, I know he was still deep in it last week.
Yeah, he said he's doing something, I haven't, I haven't been able to figure out what his, what his issue is. Because I thought we had everything pretty well discussed. I don't know what he's doing, I haven't talked to him. But see if we can get that ahead of time. I, I really don't want to come to that meeting and sit there and be doing speed reading. Because this is too important, we haven't got a lot of time, we only got ninety to hundred and twenty days to get this activated.
Chairman, I made just briefly a follow-up on the facilities plan. It was advertised for January board meeting. Do consideration of that.
Mrs. Wire, thank you.
I have just a couple of questions for you. There was a question about the sign, no parking signs on Griffin Drive that's on our pole. And it's for the HOA, pardon. Are they allowed to put signs on our poles?
I thought it was just a new parking sign by itself.
I thought it was attached to our pole. I thought they needed to put it inside their own. Not on our, not on our.
The right way.
Right.
It's the county right way. But that's okay.
But, and also the stop sign at the corner of your seven eleven has to be fixed?
Both those signs have been ordered and will be installed in the next week. One in the median on Griffin, the gateway is on a, on a pole. So both those are being replaced and said have already been ordered and should be in the next few days.
And I don't know what's for you or Mr. Bloom. When invoices are paid, okay? I, I know that the board used to get copies of them years ago, because I have a look in the Sunday books. I was wondering if I could have a copy, paper copy? Or you can do an Excel sheet where they're paid and so I know what, what's being paid and part of our budget and.
Yeah, but we do a run every week, a check run of invoices that are paid. We send that to him from our, we can sure give you a copy of that. It's just, it's just a ledger that goes down, you know?
I would appreciate that. And I don't know who gets this question. But it's because it's the district manager. Were you for his evaluation, we did it last year in January, are we doing another one? Just, just.
It was in February.
Oh, I know, but it's got to be, it's February. It's February fourteenth, we had a workshop on it. I remember, but I thought we need to do something ahead of time to bring, we brought the papers down. I'm just asking, I did, but because it's the manager, I figured I'd ask.
That's a good question. What are, what are staff evaluations?
What we've been doing the last month, coincide with the fiscal year. And in the past, they've done it by the employee's anniversary date, which had them all over the year. So we went to an October one. And we did salary increases and made changes at that time. And there's still a couple evaluations that are outstanding, but that's what we do on this October first.
We should probably plan to do, probably kick Chris's off in January.
To have another workshop or something? I'm just curious, I think what, what I would suggest we do is bring the paperwork for the evaluation to the first meeting in January so that we all have a chance to look it over. And then we can discuss when we'd actually have the evaluations due.
And who's going to lead it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, I didn't know.
No problem.
Where, where that should be.
No problem. Anything else?
I don't want to, sorry.
I know, just waiting to make sure. Don't want to cut you off.
I've got another question, Chris. Did we get the list of our comments on Commerce Lake running about to the county on the, by the twenty-fifth?
Yes, and I also noticed that pipe section we asked to include in the survey, the drainage pipe north of the FBI wasn't on that survey that they did.
It wasn't?
No. I think you, you got a copy of that request I made to them to include that and locate it.
I went out there and walked that area and there is no way they can do that and have that water going out into a bubble up in that deal. That would be a nightmare. All that surface, they got to get it into that forty-eight or fifty-four inch pipe. That, that's the only, well, I had, I had one other one. I sent you earlier, I've got a complaint from people, and I don't know what we do because I think it's maybe applicable to other places. People are pulling off, we did such a damn good job on that Stony Brook Flowway that people thinks it's a pay lake now, but they paid it. How do we stop them from pulling? I can't believe that guy took his vehicle off the road at Gateway Boulevard there on the Stony Brook. On, not on your side, no, no, the west side. Drove the car down, or the, the four-wheel drive down and was fishing.
Where?
Stony Brook Flowway.
Right on the other side of it.
Right on your side of Gateway Boulevard.
He drove over the curve, over the mountain.
And down the hill.
And down the side, which we had a hard time getting the excavator in to do the work there. And what I told the fellow, his complaint is I told him I put some no trespassing and no fishing signs and I'll put three of them across each side so you'd have to drive over the signs.
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking a nail strip on both sides would solve that too.
Because if he starts making a path there and it rains, then you're just going to erode around that head wall. And fill it up with silt. So, yeah, I couldn't believe when I saw those pictures that he was back there fishing.
I, I saw, well, the people across, people in hidden links, but they're also giving graphic descriptions of them relieving themselves over there also. That's not making them happy.
And to drive off the road there, it didn't compute because, since we were doing that, I walked back there several times and that took a little work.
I, I won't even take my golf cart down there. I don't know how you get a truck back there.
Well, they have nice things.
But, but that's not the, or the reason I brought it up, because of that. But also, I have noticed in other places around the community where there is an opportunity to pull off the road, people have been pulling off fishing. I see it right down here by our pump station, Catty Corner Cross from seven eleven. And I see it down there on the other side of the little breakfast eatery. They pull off and just.
You've got a soccer place at Daniel's.
Yeah, yeah, technically, Chris, you know, the part of no trespassing signs is what we can enforce. No fishing is FWC, but you can put the no trespassing.
And that, that stretch of property, actually all we have is a drainage easement through there, it's not our property up on the side.
No trespassing on our facility.
But if we could do something, at least the, the hidden links deals where just straight across those people are looking at it and are concerned.
I let the fellow know we'd be out there within two weeks, we have the signs, I order them, we'll go put them in concrete.
And those two are the same two that parked their truck at the church and then walk in at Walden Lakes. And they just go all the way around.
Mine? Anything else, Mr. Wire?
That's all I have.
I just have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Chris, where are we at? I think I saw an approval for the PA system.
I think we were getting, we're doing some in-house wiring on that, Glenn, everything? Okay, on the PA system for the soccer field? We're ready to go anytime, go ahead and get it installed. We got to do some in-house work, cut sidewalks, put in a few sleeves for the new wiring.
You want to have Glenn approach the microphone, sorry?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
I was reading.
I'm sorry.
Anyways, we are in the process of getting a material list for the sleeving that we're going to have to do over there. We're going to have to do some of the work ourselves, the contractor does and cut sidewalks and put in sleeves. The wire that's out there right now going to the existing pole with the speakers that still work currently is really compromised as direct berry.
It's like seventies speakerboard.
Yeah, and they, they ran, they ran it out of the top of the softet and through the gutter is how it was originally run, so we're trying to figure out the best way.
Any ETA on that, like two months, whatever?
About a month and a half or so.
And then we have, Chris, did you guys have a lay-in on where, where you're considering putting the new bocce in?
Up right across the street where the original site was. And Glenn just recently got some quotes for a, two courts and then we can get another quote from another firm, it'll be out tomorrow.
Maybe that's the best location on the.
Mark, one other question for Chris. Go ahead. Any update on our building?
Building's moving right along. We're still anticipating a mid-December delivery date, sometime in there. The slab's ready to go, the power's ready to go. We're going to go with an IP phone system back there. So we have a little redundancy in case our plan line goes out. And try, try that on the backside with the data drop. And you know, we set to put in the new computers and the new phones. And I'm still looking at the mid-January opening date.
Andy, what you going to do in here while, once we get that in? I, I thought there was going to be some improvements over here.
We're going to come in and paint everything and refloor everything.
Any chance we can scope modification of this during that?
That also kind of changes around. My digital clock in the back.
Anything else for District Manager? District Engineer?
Good afternoon, for the record, Danny Nelson, Attenture Tech, District Engineer. So there are three items on the agenda going in order. The first is Task Authorization twenty twenty dash oh three. This is for the construction management for the lakes. We're looking at being complete hopefully next week with the lakes and getting those ready for bid. The one thing, Chris, that is not in our current contract is not in this scope is the, the development order. So, you know, probably the easiest thing with time, since this is the only meeting in December, is if we can just work on that with you guys under the general. There shouldn't be a whole lot of effort to that, that we can just, you know, get that ready and get that in for the development order, so.
County that issued, we went.
Right, that before we didn't have to have it and now we have to have it. So that's the only item that's, that's really outstanding.
Yeah, if we can get started on that, we do the task order for it because then we can submit it for the person.
Perfect, perfect, yeah, so actually we wouldn't even bill to that, you wouldn't even see a bill until it would be approved. So we can get that on the first agenda in January.
So we need a motion for this task order authorization?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve task authorization twenty twenty oh two. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Any? Any opposed?
The second item is complimentary to that. It's twenty twenty oh four, and that's for the construction observation that's required as part of the SRF process.
Same thing. Motion to approve task authorization twenty twenty oh four for the construction observation.
I'll make that.
Further discussion?
Did you say observation, right? That was your word?
Inspection.
Construction observation.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The third item is a status update of our authorizations. A couple to really point out. Third item, we could certainly talk about any of these on air, but I specifically want to give an update on a couple of these. Third item down nineteen dash twelve is Task Authorization two thousand nineteen dash twelve. That will actually come before the board as part of a public hearing at the first meeting in January. Following that, it'll go to DEP for inclusion on their February public hearing for approval of funding. Nineteen dash thirteen, that's what we were just talking about with the lakes. So that plan is, you know, complete that before with bidding. And we'll get those to DEP just like we did last year. The timing wise, they'll approve the funding. And you'll be able to move forward likely in that February, March timeframe.
One day, we're gonna be getting into the facilities planning of those non-pond related issues, but water sewer and reuse. Some of those things like the parallel force vein and the irrigation, reuse irrigation in the FPLEs that are gonna come down to accessibility of that land. Will SRF and/or somebody up the ladder require us to show proof that we have acquisition of that land to do it?
From a facilities planning standpoint, I've never seen that. I would assume prior to your actual being able to, yeah, perform it.
But what I don't want to do is get through, get all this done, and have ready to start construction. So I was gonna lean over toward Tony and say, where are we having the FPLEs with that? But that's a critical one to do a lot of the stuff we want to do that's in that facility's land.
We should have the answer in January, remember? I've not yet submitted it, but they've written that pretty quickly on those.
Who's that?
The county, when I made, do the ZDO request. And then the D, I mean, we already have all the basic title work. Just need to update it.
So everything from Lennar, WCI, we've got.
Well, we just need updated. That would just need to be updated.
The third one I wanted specifically to bring up was the last one on there, twenty oh one. And that's for the utility relocation associated with the roundabout. That one's moving to a fast-track design so we can get that included with the joint project agreement, I think Tony's gonna talk about in a bit, for the roundabout at Commerce.
And they are going to do the bidding of it? We provide it with a plan, set a bid schedule? Is that how it goes?
Yes, and, yes, and that'll be included in their set. So you'll know the exact dollars. And then the joint project agreement will have how that funding mechanism will work with your reimbursement to them for those items.
The construction management and construction observation that isn't done by them, is it?
Well, we have, in our scope, we have construction management. And we have, we don't have construction observation. So that was a point I brought up to Tony because that was a point that the county had in there that Gateway would be responsible for the observation of the utility. So I asked the question of if Gateway wasn't providing that in-house, and if Lee County is providing observation anyhow, why not just work it out so you could use the same individual inspecting that work? So I'm not sure where that stands.
I don't have a real high level of confidence on their utility inspection.
Okay, then that would be something that Gateway would need to include.
If something was wrong, it's our exposure.
Hey, Peter.
I had a question on nineteen eleven. Second one down.
Yes.
Where are we on that?
And I even said that I would follow up prior to this meeting. So everything's been submitted. We're just waiting from Lee County. But I have not followed up and asked them where it sits. But the deviation's been submitted. It's administrative. It's at Jessica Sulzer's level. So we'll follow up and ask her. I would ask her now, but it's five o'clock.
I understand. I had a question about the fact that the authorization date is three twenty, ten twenty nineteen. We've been working on this for a lot longer.
Yeah, the risks that got thrown in there was the whole deviation, which was, I mean, everything was done down to the deviation. The deviation being that where the four to one slopes were at, they were three point six to one. So that's what, you know, threw that in there. And that wasn't something we had anticipated or had in our scope. So it just, you know, took more time to get to that point. But, I mean, we'll certainly follow up with them and ask where they're at.
And then nineteen fourteen says awaiting authorization. Waiting authorization from whom?
As of when we prepared this, it was approved by the board. But that was the one that when we talked, our last coordination meeting, that Tony had signed and you had, you needed to sign it. And I don't, if I've got it, then I prepared this before that. So I'm not sure when that was actually done. But if I have it, I've got it set up.
I'm pretty sure I signed it.
Yeah, if you, yeah, then this would have been prepared before that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure because that would concern me a little bit.
Yep, understood. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Danny? Thank you.
Do you need to stick around for anything?
Do you need any for the?
GPA?
I think so, yeah, I think, sure.
And if it's so, that was the joint project, right?
Yes.
Okay. We can move that up with the, if the board doesn't have any problem with that, move for a here for the first so we can let our District Engineer go home and have dinner.
Yes.
I hear no objections, so.
Yes, man, I don't know if you wish to take that. I think it might be used in First Amendment. Might be the first one, the landscape science, drainage utilities, and street lighting maintenance agreement.
Oh, okay.
I think that one's pretty straightforward. What the red lines you see are your staff's suggested revisions. Paragraph three about the right-of-way permits and the waiver. I had some emails from Jonathan Deema trying to clarify that. That's routine maintenance, if necessary. But if the district wants to go in there and do some major work, they're gonna require the right-of-way permit for that. So that's not finalized yet. This language was in a prior agreement, I believe. And that's why we expect that in there. So, I don't know if the board has any other comments on the First Amendment.
So this isn't quite ready to move forward on?
What I would suggest is that the. Make the approval approved in substantially final form as it exists, subject to finalization with the district manager, engineer, and chair, and district council. Until now, whatever time it gets on the county commission agenda, that's appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
The other one gets more interesting. Unfortunately, I just wrote that an email from Jonathan Deema on Monday, but I was tied up in hearings all week. Didn't have a chance to really review it yet. But on the joint project agreement, some of the suggested changes are more just sequencing and clarification as opposed to substantive. That's sort of some of the wherethes were that. And that one, other wherethes about we intend to execute the First Amendment, again, just timing issue. On paragraph two, where I said, is there a missing language or text? I quickly glanced at the revised version. I received from Mr. Deema. I think what happened there was it's a formatting issue, that comma and come out, and it's a period, so it adds. And that makes sense in that context. In paragraph three, I think that's the one where Danny may have had comments on, in concern with regards to inspection, Danny? I can't recall. Is that the area?
Yes.
And the latest version I have from the county does not have any change to that section. So we need to discuss, give clarification on what estimates of what. I had sent those to Jonathan Deema and then Danny's comments.
Well, I think mine was, I think that was my primary comment, was just making sure that was accounted for and covered. So if that's something for the board to discuss on their pleasure, Mr. Tinkles certainly didn't feel like having their inspector perform an utility inspection was proper, which means it would be performed on Gateway's side. So, you know, that's something, I don't know, Chris, if you have somebody that can do that or if you want us to provide a scope for it. I'm good either way.
And if the county had an independent inspector or if it's somebody that's on staff?
They have a staff. Now, I think who they would have would probably be somebody, I can't speak for them, but I would assume they would have a DOT inspector, who is a DOT type inspector, their roadway inspector, who may or may not have underground utility inspection experience. The problem that Mr. Tinkles is talking about is, you know, they're really looking after the best interest of the county, and they're not necessarily looking after the best interest of you. So the way to save money is to use their inspector if they're qualified, but you don't have guarantees of their qualifications for utilities nor over there, you know, what they're looking after for you, so.
Yeah, I concur with that. Because the way it's described is they have the interim supervision of the construction of the roundabout.
Of the roundabout, I saw that.
And it says to make sure it's in compliance with utility plans and specs. It doesn't say, well, we're gonna make sure that our heavy equipment doesn't, you know, damage your lines. I mean, so it's just kind of, so Danny, is that something you think is important for the district to have its independent?
I think given what you're looking at there, if it was, you know, water line or force vein out in the pasture, that's not a big deal. But you're dealing with a lot of utilities. You're dealing with a lot of work that's going on in a small, tight area. I think so.
They said the county hired the next engineering to assure construction of the roundabout. And I guess if you want to put in the.
And the district will.
Well, to consult with the districts. How would you phrase it, Danny? Agent, or?
Well, it'd be a.
What role would you envision for that person?
We call them RPR, Residential Project Representative.
Would you put a statement there that says that, you know, something, where it says their inspector in conjunction with our appointed representative or something?
In coordination with.
If they're gonna have their inspector, it's fine. We're gonna have our inspector as well, so they need to work together.
In coordination with.
In coordination with, yeah.
Okay. With the district's inspector or representative.
And we can talk about it tomorrow. But, I mean, my preference would be that if you have somebody that, you know, can perform that, that would be a lot easier. I mean, we can certainly do it. I just don't have anybody right now. I would have to find somebody.
I would say you have to assure construction of the roundabout and the district's utility, you know, are in compliance with that.
Yeah, or district identified.
We can talk about that tomorrow, Chris.
Okay. Representative or whatever.
Is this time sensitive, Tony?
I think it's on the same track as the others. They want to try to get it to the January board. I mean, I don't recall if John said it actually was on the agenda yet.
I don't.
The December meeting, December.
As far as this issue, the RPR, that I think having the language in there is fine. You're, you know, the work's not gonna start until probably April, May, so.
Yeah, I think the only time sense I think was, but there was a county commission meeting they were trying to shoot for.
I thought it was the first in January.
And so that's the only time sense of nature to make sure you have something you can give them to have on the agenda.
Okay, can you, can this be brought back at the second meeting?
Not to make the January county commission.
Oh, okay.
You're just gonna put a sentence in there indicating that we're doing the construction observation of our own facility.
Right, right. Everything else, I don't think it's this pretty standard joint project agreement otherwise.
Well, and they're coordinated. So I can suggest if the county provides the necessary engineering supervision in coordination with the district's authorized representative to ensure construction of the roundabout and the district's utility lines is in compliance with the utility plans. Does that work, Danny, for you?
Yes.
That work for you and the coordination? And that also comfortable? Any comments on the rest of the proposed changes?
I don't have any, but.
The only question I have is that number nine, which I'll just clarify that with Jonathan Deema. That may have just been a straight word. That kind of wandered its way in. Straight word. It may have, it may, it may have moseyed out in. And again, if the board's comfortable, they can approve the form of the agreement substantially final form with the district manager, district engineer, district council, and chair to finalize the form. And if that happens to have any major changes, and this is on the county commission meeting for their first meeting in January, and if this board meets before, then we can always bring it back. Gratitude.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
All right, we've got four to one. It's Mr. Guy.
Way to hold your hand a little.
He does hang on there. We'll tie you to a bulldozer.
Foolish consistency is the hobgoblin.
It would be a nice monument. A stone bill saying, no, or.
Hold a hammer, no.
You shall not pass.
Who was the guy with the title to Charlton Heston? My cold shaky hand.
This is good. I have fundraiser though. Get Falcon to kick in.
We'll bring you water.
Next item is the proposal to combine water use permits.
Let me just quickly, we have two water use permits, one for the Gateway Golf Course, which is our permit. And of course, one for our irrigation system. They're separate permits, separate for the wells. We just finished rehabbing one of the wells. We just finished rehabbing one of the wells, we're getting good yield out of it, and we're testing it right now to be able to use the water ourselves.
Is that one of the four, or one of the?
Yes, sir. And we plan to move ahead and refurbish another one, and the reason is, is those shallow wells have high water quality, and you can't get a permit for those these days, it's just impossible, so we want to, the golf course isn't using the water, and we aren't at this time, so the Water Management District, if you aren't using it, will revoke that permit at the next modification or next renewal time. So it's selfish on our part, we want to rehab the wells, put the permits together, and while we can't get any additional quantities, we can add those wells to our rotation, so we have backups. If we had one or two of our wells go down, we'd be in serious trouble, so it's really redundancy there, and also get us out of the golf courses business, because right now we go over there on a monthly basis, and we have to report meter readings to the Water Management District and do chloride testing, and it's for a facility we really don't operate or control, so we would transfer that portion of the permit, the surface water, to the golf course. And it's a sixteen thousand five hundred dollar task to get this done, and we had a meeting with the Water Management District four weeks ago to discuss the specifics of it, and they were favorable to it, keeping the permit alive.
Just give me one second. Just for the record, I wanted to note that Mrs. Flaherty left the meeting at five ten, she needed to leave for a prior commitment.
We need a motion for this?
Yes, sir, it's action.
I'm sorry?
It's an action.
Yes, sir. Yeah, okay, I'll make that motion to go ahead, the authorization of the amount of, what, nuts exceed sixteen five?
Yes, sir.
To approve the proposal from WSP in the amount of sixteen five?
Yes.
To combine the water use permits. Okay, we have the motion, second?
I'll second it.
May I ask, good question?
You may.
I listened to what you said, and. It seems to me that sixteen thousand five hundred dollars is a lot of money to pay to just do a bunch of paperwork to get permits together, and it isn't gonna give us any, it isn't gonna give us any more water, or very little water. A hundred feet of excess, isn't it?
The quantities, if we go through the other wells, could be considerable, what it is, is we don't have the ability to use that water because it's on a permit for the golf course, so we can't even move it this direction. And also, one of the reasons it's kind of high is when you get involved with a permit like that, there'll be some groundwater modeling that they'll have to do on the drawdowns of those wells and existing users, so that's what pushes the fee up.
Is this gonna be the end of it? Is this, is this a king five, is that gonna be it?
That would be it, it'll be, the permit for those wells will be in our name, and, you know, we can use them for our system and use them to dilute the high chloride water coming out of Hawthorne well.
This, just make sure, this is not just the one well, it's.
It's all of them, the entire permit.
So we're not gonna go repeating this again, it's all, there's five wells in that area, one we have worked on and got it rehabilitated, but the paperwork is to do all of them, transfer them all.
Thank you, man, sure.
And this still allows us to use that well in any way we see fit, whether we do supply the golf course with water down the road or whatever, it's still.
Yeah, that's an option, I talked to Jimmy Manta, too, they just don't have the budget funds right now to inspect that pipeline or put any money into it, or even pay the connection fee for irrigation water, so he said, move forward, do with the water what you will. But that could be resurrected at a later date, and we are flanking that pipeline, and we're gonna send the water this way to test the integrity of it for about a three hundred yard section, which will give us a good idea of what the rest of the line looks like.
You're telling me that that may not be the, this may not be the.